Okay.
Welcome to the September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five Town Council meeting. Roll call.
What, seven o'clock, seven oh one? Sorry.
Yeah, time's seven oh one.
Ron Granger. Andy Schaefer.
Here.
Todd Thang.
Here.
Sean Morgan.
Here.
Tim Weber.
Here.
Al Ren. Robbie Ehl.
Here.
Tim, would you give us the invocation, please?
Absolutely, let's bow. Oh Heavenly Father, gracious Lord, we thank you for this day and we thank you for giving your son Jesus Christ to live the perfect life and gave his life willingly on the cross and was risen three days later for, as it says in Romans ten thirteen, "For whoso ever call upon his name, they shall be saved." And Lord, I lift up this meeting to you tonight and ask that you put your hand on it, that you bless each and every one of us here. And Lord, I ask that you put your hand on our EMS, our police, our fire, and all those that serve this community through the town, uh, through the administration and from the council itself. Lord, may you, uh, guide us in our decisions and Lord, may we put our faith in you and not in man. And Lord, I just pray that you continue to bless us with your Holy Spirit. And as I close, I recite Hebrews eleven seven, eleven, chapter eleven, verse six, "And without faith it is impossible to please him; for whoever withdraw near to God must believe that he exists and that he rewards those who seek him." Be with us this night and in these decisions that we make and comments and and things that we do tonight, may they honor you and not us. We ask this in your son, Jesus Christ, precious name, amen.
Thank you, Tim. Lisa, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item five, a discussion and action to approve the Town Council minutes of September ninth, twenty-twenty-five.
I make a motion to approve the September ninth, twenty-twenty-five minutes as presented.
Second. Motion made by Tim, second by Todd, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It was Robbie.
I got Todd first.
Oh, Robbie was just a short second off.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, petitions and public input. Item seven, changes to the agenda. Don't see any. Item eight, public carings, we don't have any. Item nine, Town Manager update.
Um, the, all the departments have just been working on small, um, projects. The gas department is still in the middle of their PUC audit. Um, they also are gonna do some mosquitoes spraying, unfortunately, I thought the cold would kill them off, but hasn't quite yet, so they'll do some more mosquitoes spraying. Um, Kelly's also taking care of some large meter changes and, um, uh, just taking care of a few gas risers that need to be taken out. Um, the rainstorms have caused a lot of problems with the water treatment plant, but Michael and Emily have been putting in extra time to manage those problems that will probably be ongoing for a few years. We, and as Michael stated, he did have a meeting with some FEMA representatives, but right now we don't see any additional funds coming in for those kind of problems. Uh, Jeff's been cleaning drainage ditches and, um, trying to get through some of the different weed problems that we still have. The rain has made those come out again, so. Um, Police Department, I'll just let probably Ty talk about that. They had a UPS failure, so we've got a few problems that we're hoping to fix once we get the new UPS. Um, Chloe will be taking the flowers out this week. She's done an excellent job, but it's fine. So if any, I know, Andy, you can't water the flowers anymore.
You can.
But, um, a few people asked if they could take some flowers, so if you want to take some flowers, get with Chloe and you can keep watering at your house. Um, Jocelyn is hard and heavy on the river project and also we're gonna be working on, um, getting the footer set for Walter the dinosaur up by the museum and we'll part out our dinosaur diamond kiosk, which used to be in the courtyard up there, along with the kiosk kinda talking about Walter and how he came to be a Rangelley dinosaur. So that'll be pretty cool. You, he's gonna look really neat. We've seen pictures of him at the artist residence and it's gonna be very cool. It's all industrial looking. It'll just be a really nice addition to the space up there. Um, Mayor Bill has a parade permit coming up for homecoming and I think CNCC, maybe some of them can talk about that and having their homecoming this weekend with a bunch of festivities, so. That's kind of what's been going on here of late.
Any questions for Lisa? Thanks for the update, Lisa. Appreciate it. Item eleven A, Chief Hamlin swearing in of Patrol Officer Raylin Norman.
All right, are you ready? Yeah, please raise your hand. Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Raylin Norman.
Swear and affirm.
Swear and affirm.
That'll uphold the Constitution.
That'll uphold the Constitution. Sorry.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The laws of the state of Colorado.
The laws of the state of Colorado.
And the ordinance of the town of Rangelley.
And the ordinance of the town of Rangelley.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. So help me God.
Congratulations. All right, now you're gonna pin on that badge.
Okay. Here, here. Right here. Keep it on one. Keep it on one. He's doing great, Kim. Did a good job. She only stabbed me a little, it's fine. You did a good job, high five. Good job. You did great. You did great.
And, uh, with your permission, uh, Officer Norman would like to address the council.
Yeah, please, yeah, for sure.
Do you wanna say with mom? I'm gonna read this, okay? "Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want us to begin by saying how truly honored I am to stand here today. Receiving this badge is more than just a symbol of authority, it's a symbol of trust, responsibility, and service. It marks the beginning of a lifetime commitment to protecting and serving this community with integrity and courage. But first, I want to sincerely thank the Town Council for placing your trust in me and for the continued support you give to our department." Sorry, also doing the mom thing. Um, your leadership and vision are what helped make our town a safe and thriving place to live. It's because of your commitment that I and my fellow officers can serve with the resources, training, and support we need to do this job well. Your continued support in this journey is monumental to me, so thank you again. To my coworkers and fellow officers, thank you. From day one, you welcomed me, guided me, and reminded me that this job is never done alone. The camaraderie we share, the mentorship I've already received, and the high standard you uphold inspire me to keep learning and always have your back, just as I know you'll always have mine. And to my past instructors and to my current trainers, I owe you a great deal. You didn't just teach me tactics or procedures, you taught me mindset, discipline, and what it truly means to wear this badge. Thank you for pushing me when I needed it and preparing, preparing me not just to pass the course, but to serve my community. And finally, and most importantly, to my family. Thank you for being here today and for being there every day. This career means sacrifices and I, I know that means more worry, more late nights, and moments missed. Your love, your patience, and your belief in me means more than I could express. A special thank you to my mother and to my daughter. Mom, you've supported me in every walk of life, no matter what I've done, even sometimes I know that's hard. But your unwavering support means the most to me. And to my daughter, she is the light that pushes me forward, working hard to be the best, and I work hard to be the best example I can be just for her. Everything I do is for her. But this badge may have my name on it, but I wear it for all of you. So in closing, I don't take this responsibility lightly. I will do my best to serve with honor, to listen, to learn, and to protect. Thank you for, all for being a part of this moment, one I will never forget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ray, Raylin, for doing, you know, everything that you've done in order to get to this. It's a lot of hard training and stuff like that. You're in hands of a, a great department, so a lot of knowledge that you have out there, so, uh, welcome to the, welcome to the Rangelley Police Department.
Thank you.
And we do. Cheesecake is in the conference room.
For my supervisor report, I think the, uh, the, the big thing that the council should be aware of is our UPS, which is our backup battery. We've had issues with this for, for quite a while. Uh, this was something that we've already addressed through our nine-one-one board. It's been approved. They're actually here. Um, the batteries are here. It's just, we're waiting on their tech to come out and then do the install because it's high voltage. Um, that's happening, uh, on the thirtieth still. Uh, but in the meantime, because the UPS is in the line, uh, whenever, as it's having its faults and going up and down, it is causing us to lose power in dispatch. We lost power, uh, probably a hundred times the other day, at least. And it would come on, come down, come back on, come back down. That ended up frying our door circuits, uh, for our key cards to get in and out of our doors. Uh, caused a few other issues. Uh, we're gonna have to have, uh, Bearcom come back up and reinstall some stuff on Station Two.
Correct, still.
No, uh, we're actually moving it down back up, um, so right now, Station Two is fine.
Okay.
It's just the door cars.
Just the door cars, so, uh, but that is something that, uh, given that that was an issue through our UPS, uh, we'll be addressing that with our nine-one-one board and seeing if they can help us with that. We don't know what that cost repair is. Uh, we're currently gonna be down until we get the UPS fixed. There's no reason to have our doors fixed in the meantime and have this happen again. Uh, currently, we, uh, Ducey's came and did bypass our UPS, so it's, it's out of the line now, uh, to try to, uh, help mitigate some of that problem. So it was an unexpected cost, uh, it was an unexpected, uh, equipment failure. Um, pretty catastrophic for us for a little bit, but we are up and running again with a plan in place to get this addressed, uh, at the end of the month. Any questions about the UPS?
Is that gonna exceed the cost we approved in the nine-one-one board?
Uh, as of now, it hasn't exceeded, but what, whatever that overall cost is going to be, uh, because we're going to, uh, like I said, address the, the doors. I, I don't know what it is. We can see actual physical burn marks in, uh, the panel with, uh, the key card access for our doors. So we're gonna dispatch a tech up here to look at it and give us that estimate once we get the UPS in line and we know we no longer have issues. Any questions about that? Uh, stats, still the same. Uh, we don't really vary too much from that. I mean, we stay pretty consistent with our calls for service and for our proactive approach. Uh, we are still, we're in the hiring process, um, for full-time officer. We had three applicants and we are looking at two out of the three. We did last month, offer a conditional to, uh, for a dispatcher position and that was, uh, rescinded. Um, that person's no longer in our process. Uh, last month, uh, we assisted the county and the sheriff's office with fire efforts. Um, as that was going on, we offered any assistance, uh, that they requested or could use from us. Uh, we attended Chevron's Pipeline's, uh, first responder breakfast. We held our sixth annual national night out. Uh, Officer Johnson, uh, was trained in ABLE, uh, which every one in the department is. Uh, that's de-escalation training for officers. We're still one of the only few on the Western Slope that are certified as an agency for that. Uh, and with Officer Johnson being certified, um, because Officer Norman was already previously certified, so with that, everybody in the agency, not just patrols, certified in ABLE. Uh, and then we did our usual September Fest, uh, activities, bike rally, um, and all of that, assisted with the parade. That's all I have for you for my supervisor report, unless you have any questions or anything else you'd like to discuss.
Ty, I just wanna say thanks for bringing that young lady up in, in through your department and giving her a chance and putting faith in that she's the person to spend the, the time and money on to get her, and it sounds like it's her dream, so thanks for being a part of that to, to help fulfill that. Doesn't happen very often to us in life, but thanks for taking the, putting the faith in her. We appreciate that.
You're welcome. We have a lot of faith and, uh, we have very high hopes for, for Officer Norman.
Very good, thank you.
And I'm just gonna go check on them real quick to, I'll be back. I wanna make sure they.
Check on the cheesecake.
Item twelve, old business. Item thirteen A, discussion action to approve the August twenty-twenty-five financial statement.
So obviously, the general fund looks a little better. Um, we did have a shortfall of over five hundred thousand in severance, which we expect to see probably happen over the next probably five years from the way the state is talking about their budget, so that will probably put us in much more of a mode of conservation with all of our funds, especially the general fund. Gas fund had a negative balance, but I think it was because they spent some of their capital. I think that will even itself out once we hit November and December. RDA, um, those funds came, were directly from the rare grant which we received last year, so, um, it's just pulling out of the fund balance. The housing assistance closed on those lots and obviously, we've talked a little bit about me getting another grant to do the pre-development on those three duplexes. And then the RDC, um, that's working on the river project and we won't do a reimbursement increase until the end of this month, which is quarterly, so that'll even itself out once we get those expenses reimbursed through that grant. Do you guys have any questions about any of the other financials?
I make a motion to approve the August twenty-twenty-five financial statement.
A second.
Motion is made by Todd, second by Sean. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen B, discussion action to approve the liquor license renewal for Pinion Tree Liquors, Liquors Incorporated.
I make a motion to approve the liquor license renewal for Pinion Tree Liquor, Liquor Incorporated as presented.
Second.
Motion is made by Tim, second by Robbie. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen C, discussion and action to approve an application to DOLA, Division of Housing for Pre-Development Grant for the Rangelley Duplex Project in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
So I kinda wanna explain that, um, first, uh, financial sheet. They wanted to also know what we have already spent money on too, so that includes an appraisal, some of the, um, closing costs on those lots, so it's a little convoluted, but the most we will get is the fifty thousand and there's, I really doubt the town will spend any money, but I just wanted you to understand what they asked me to put on that as a precursor to making that application.
And that was for three lots, right?
Yes.
Three lots, okay. I make a motion to approve the application to the Division of Housing for Pre-Development Grant for the Rangelley Duplex Project in the amount of fifty thousand.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Tim, second by Todd. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen D, discussion action to approve a letter authorizing Lisa Parry, interim Town Manager, to be the authorized officer to apply and be the signature for the pre-development grant application and agreement.
This is just similar to the other lot, um, purchases. They want to have it in writing that I'm authorized to make that, um, sign that contract.
Make a motion as presented.
A second. Second.
Motion is made by Todd, second by Sean. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen E, discussion and consideration of the request from the Rangelley Chamber of Commerce to receive an additional twenty thousand dollar contribution for twenty-twenty-five.
Hi, gentlemen. Um, you received our packet and our financials. Were there any questions?
Hang on, let me get down to it.
Well, Emma, you wanna, you know, we did not budget more than twenty thousand for the chamber.
Okay.
So just so you guys are aware of that, that's all that was added for the annual.
Hang on, I'm getting to some stuff unless you guys are.
Well, what happened, Emma, this year that's different than the last few years? That's, that brings you here, because the chamber's been getting by on the twenty thousand for the past three years, I think.
Past two years, um, barely getting by. Uh, we've added some new things with the Main Street markets that we've added this summer too, and then, uh, taking on Rockin' Bowl as well this year, um, was a big thing. And then, you know, a lot of our other moneymakers, we haven't been able to really do this year because of previous. Um, so that's been a hit too as well. Yeah, we just, uh, saw the history of it and I just thought it might be an option. And I know you guys are supportive of everything and we really appreciate it. We wanna continue our relationship, but.
Do you think the Rockin' Bowl will be something that you'll continue?
I do, yeah. It's just, uh, it was hard bringing it back, um, and being a new entity, running it as well. So we'll get, we'll get better and better as we go on. It's kinda the same thing with, um, our new events like Butch Cassidy Days and stuff, like it takes a little bit of investment, a little bit of, um, time for it to, to grow and catch on.
So, so between the two, I mean, you're like, I mean, the Rockin' Bowl lost, uh, you're showing the negative seventeen thousand dollars for the Rockin' Bowl. And then for the Butch Cassidys, you're another eleven thousand five hundred. I mean, it's, so that will be something you'll continue?
We'll try to. Um, we wanna, we wanna try to continue these things and, and bring these events to town so we can build an economic boost and get that sales tax money being spent here and bring people in.
And so, I guess that's.
Obviously, we do need to tweak the numbers and slim down. Um, I think, I think, uh, I might have gone a little bit too big where we're at, and so I need to adjust that. It was kinda hard with it being, we were celebrating the fifteenth annual for the Rockin' Bowls, and so we really wanted to, to put on a good show and celebrate that fifteenth, but for us, technically, it was the first annual, so.
So do you think with, with combining those with, like September Fest, would increase the tax revenue rather than trying to split it between two different weekends, or do you think that this, is that something you're gonna try to continue, is doing it on off weekend? Because since I've lived here for the last thirty-four years, September Fest has kinda been that big weekend project for, uh, for the town of Rangelley. And it went from, when I first moved here, it was a one-day event and it was on, uh, Labor Day. And then it moved to a, uh, three-day event. And at the time, there was a lot, there was a lot of stuff going on, a lot of stuff to fill the days. Well, over, over time, just like it does in any small community, you get the volunteers that work themselves ragged on for one event and they get burnt out and then they're gone, but I don't know. I'm not gonna tell you how to run your business, but it just seems like those two events could coincide?
It, I mean, it's possible. Um, I think the reason why we did Rockin' Bowls when it was is because the students were back that week, the CNCC students, and then also the kids were back in school. And it was, it was always a way to welcome them back. The way that the, the calendar lined out, it didn't, didn't mean for it to be weekend after weekend. But I think it brings in a, a different variety of people too, not just, um, uh, September Fest has its own, it stands on its own, it's got its own traditions. And what we're trying to do is, we're, we're trying to boost our economy, we're trying to put money back into our businesses and recirculate that and by drawing different interests and so that was, that's the whole point behind that, but we did combine, um, Butch Cassidy Days with Rockin' Bowls to try to condense and try to, try to make it not so, so much for us. I mean, we're a, a one-chamber and a board that puts all this stuff on, so it can be a lot.
It can be a lot and I, but sometimes I don't see how you do it with people pleasing.
Lots of caffeine, uh, and I'm pretty good at listening.
I mean, looking at your, looking at your financials that you presented, I, I just didn't.
We're in the worst of it right now.
Gonna be able to continue to do those two, those two things at twenty-eight thousand dollars, twenty-nine thousand dollars in the, in the negative.
Yeah.
Cause I don't know that the town will bring in that much revenue, but I don't know that. It's hard to judge out.
I haven't been able to look at the numbers yet. Um, usually get them kind of a month afterwards, but I'll, obviously, we do the, um, reassess and we'll have our, our Chamber Board meeting is tomorrow, actually, and we'll go over that stuff as well, but we've, uh, I, I've been thinking about the, the rest of the twenty thousand that, um, was, was given past couple of years. And yeah, we haven't done it these past three years, but that doesn't mean that there wasn't a need for it. We just, we didn't ask for it. And I don't think there's any shame in asking, so that's why I'm here.
Yeah, it's a, it's a tough conversation, for sure. Um, I, I love both, uh, the events that you put on. I've even, a couple of years ago, donated handmade belts, leather belts to the, to the events and loved it. I'm, I was proud to do that and I thank you guys for putting it on. But as far as the town, I mean, we, in my, this is me speaking, we just had a budget work session with the town employees or the heads and we, you know, we're asking them to be very creative because we don't have any extra money. And as far as I'm concerned, I wish we could, but I, I don't see how we can afford to come up with an extra twenty grand right now, personally, in my opinion. to come up with an extra twenty grand right now, personally, in my opinion.
Sure, I understand. I know things are tight for everybody and.
But I'm, I'm very glad we were able to do the first twenty grand. I mean.
Yeah, we're very grateful for it.
Mm-hmm. That's my opinion.
I, I agree with it. I mean, we've listened to how we can cut here, how we can cut here, how we can cut here, with the things that we have to do. I mean, I'd love to give it to, I just don't.
I mean, is this something that we can keep coming back to continue to ask for? Cause there was support for it before, um, but we were told.
That was before we got axed five hundred grand by the state.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's, we kind of put, you have to kind of project our budget for what the, the state's gonna give us. And we were very conservative, and we didn't realize they were gonna, gonna be that stingy. So we are.
We're fine.
We're over budget.
Way bad.
We're over budget also.
Gotcha. Okay.
Can we project that it won't be that way? Cause the state's, it could take all of our severance, um, within the next five years, if not maybe forever.
Okay.
So it's unfortunate, so we're gonna all have to probably do a little more, you know, how the center.
Sure. Um, we did figure out, I, I came up with an idea for the Instead of Pints in the Parks, since we can't host that. Um, we're gonna do an October crawl, and we'll include the businesses on Main Street and do another Main Street market. Um, we'll do a Harvest and Hops Main Street Market at the Camper Park. And, um, and then we'll have stops along, um, using the liquor licenses that are already in place. And then also non-alcoholic drinks at other places too. Um, and we're gonna do it as like a passport thing where you get stamps and things like that, so. Just wanted to let you know, we figured that problem out, so.
So that'll be the Oktoberfest will be like spread around the whole town?
Yeah, so it'll be spread around the whole town. We'll start at October seventeenth. Um, we'll do that October crawl on that date. And then, um, the, like the escape rooms and the rest of that stuff, we're actually gonna do on Halloween and, uh, do that at the gathering place. And then, um, the four-H kids are setting up at the museum, and they will have, um, on the twenty-fifth and the thirtieth and the thirty-first, they'll have the haunted museum. Um, so we've got our different partners and stuff that we're, we're still working with and trying to make it a big community event and, um, yeah.
Yeah, I wish we just had money that we could do this.
Sure. Unfortunately. I've been, um, I've been toying with the idea for a while, and I just finally, finally got the nerve up to come ask. So bad timing on my part, really bad timing. But, um, I appreciate your guys' time and your support, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Emma.
Thanks, Emma. Thank you.
Um, have you guys talked about having like a, a proxy on our board yet? I, I brought it up to Ron, cause I've seen the Vernal Chamber does that. They have the Naples Mayor and then the Vernal Mayor sit on there, and I just thought it might be a good idea to keep.
Didn't we have someone there? Didn't we have? Were you on a show or was it?
Well, I served on the.
I was on the board.
G D and I were there previously. But we haven't had anybody, I think, probably since then.
Yeah.
Two or three years.
So I.
I was on the actual board.
Oh, I see.
Just something to consider if you guys wanna.
When are the meetings?
Uh, they're usually the third Thursday of the month at noon. Um, we actually have one tomorrow, um, just the way the schedule landed. We had to move it, but it would be nice to just have, uh, have you guys involved too, to see what we're working with, and then we can kind of bounce ideas off of too.
Yeah, I think, I know I would be off and on on, on making those, um, but maybe, maybe Ron can, or we can talk about it internally and see if, cause I think it's important.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, for sure.
Is it tomorrow or Thursday you're meeting?
It's actually tomorrow.
It is tomorrow.
It's a, it's a different, tomorrow was Wednesday, but it's a different date, just cause.
Because it had to be.
Yeah. It was supposed to be last Thursday, but.
Okay. I could drop in, but I can't.
You know us there.
I, I know you.
Can I get it up? Is that appropriate or inappropriate? Um, I think it's appropriate. Emma?
Yeah.
Some more hard conversation. Did, has the, uh, restriction on your special use permit cost you guys significant amount of money?
Yeah, that's, that's been part of why we haven't been able to raise as much with our events.
Okay, so just this, I don't know where it's gonna go, but it's been six months?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know what it's gonna look like or what, and we gotta have a conversation about it. But as far as, cause I'm the one who, to, I, we're not good at this. You know, um, I'm the one who came up with the one-year suspension on that. It's been six months. I would like to maybe have a, uh, open meeting with council to maybe discuss reinstating that after six months.
I, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
If that'll help generate funds, more funds for you guys.
Yeah, it's, uh, I mean, events, when you get people together and you have alcohol, it lends to more spending and you make more on your events. And this year, it's been slim because, because of the restrictions, so. We've been creative and had to figure out a way around it. And we've got some really amazing people that have supported us through it, but.
I do wanna say before I, I start this process though, that I really feel that those violations were pretty severe at the time. But I do, I'm really hoping.
I mean, we, we showed up and we said that we did what we, we did.
And, uh.
I feel like we've taken it on the chin and we've, we've taken our, our punishment for it.
I feel like you have to, so I'm gonna, again, I can't guarantee that we can do that, but I'm gonna try.
Okay.
And we'll have to see what that looks like and help, hopefully that'll help create some more funds for you guys.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Can we make a motion tonight? Do we, Mary Bell, how do you, it, chief, you're here. Can we just discuss it for a minute? Andy, is that?
I'm, I'm fine with discussing. You guys are the local authority. You have that decision. The state will be behind you as you're the authority. I'm the agent, so, and all, you are the authority. So you get to make that decision, just like you made the decision on the punishment. So that, that's my two cents. Um, you may wanna get some very clear guidelines if you do, and how you are gonna proceed with that if you do, um, just because of the issues we did have.
So is that, that is a, a conversation to have when they apply for the permit though, correct?
Yes.
Okay, with that said, I'll make a motion to reinstate the chamber's special use permit privileges as of October first, twenty twenty-five, after six-month suspension.
I'd second that, or I will second that.
Motion's been made by Ton, Todd, second by Sean. Is there any other discussion?
I'm going to abstain because I think with this, the liquor license in the parks, um, because I have to give permission in a different light, so I'm gonna abstain from that part of it. As far as reinstating, I will support it, but I have to abstain because of that.
Is four enough, or do we need a table?
No, you got enough.
Yeah.
As long as somebody does oppose, if it's an opposing, then it, then it's gonna hurt.
Right.
Do you have a?
Call for a roll?
I, I'm thinking.
Oh, okay.
I just think that there's, the only thing that I think is, I think it needs to be given a little bit of thought throughout. Cause it was a big decision to make it, and it's, I think it's a fairly big decision to reinstate it.
And I, I think it's fair to wait till the other members are here to have their input also before making that decision.
Because they've already got the plans in place for the start of this on October seventeenth. I got that letter done, I just haven't sent it out.
Thank you.
So it's not gonna affect anything?
No.
No, nothing coming up. We've already got it figured out.
Right, yep.
I mean, obviously, it goes to, we don't get any money off of it, but it.
Right.
Can we change it to table it to next council meeting?
Yes.
Do I make a motion to resend that? I've never done that.
No.
I resend my motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I resend my motion for tonight's vote and propose, make a motion to put it on next, um, council meeting's agenda to vote on the reinstating of the chamber's liquor permit after a six-month suspension. And I don't think we need to second that. We just put it on, we'll just put it on the statement.
Put it on there.
On the agenda.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Sorry, we can't help more.
It's okay, thank you.
All right, fourteen A informational item, CNCC Hall of Fame induction ceremony, September twenty-seventh. At four, um, the rare pitch competition.
Monday, seven at CNCC.
Okay. Uh, it looks like there's an RDA, RDC board vacancy. Um, scheduled announcements, A through M. Is there anything else that needs to be brought in front of the council? Okay, will be adjourned at seven forty-one. Sorry, I don't know if that was.